... United States of America and the United Republic of America stands on your behalf in the name of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Does everybody have a chance to read the minutes? Motion, second. Second. A favor. Aye. Aye. Both. Motion carries. All right. We'll start with resolution number 18. You want to present it?
Let me. Let Jen talk about it, otherwise why is she here?
Yeah, look at you. It's the same pack that we have?
Yes.
Okay, go.
This is equal our efficiency in the way the state reimburses.
Yeah, yeah. It's a time and activity tracker to meet the state regulations for grant claiming and Article VI claiming. And what it does is it allows us to track 100% of our time into the various cost centers that are required for Article VI. And it allows us to have them certified by a supervisor every time an activity record has to be certified by an employee and a supervisor. And so we tested this system and it seemed to work really, really well to be able to get all that officially done and have the correct reporting capabilities. And it's 100% reimbursed by Article VI.
Motion, second please. Any questions or discussion?
I have a quick question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Does the $3,000 is even reimbursed?
Yes.
Do you get that back and also make sure you get your reimbursements correct?
Correct, which is exactly why it's reimbursed.
Sounds like a perfect idea.
Yep.
I've got a question.
This justification activity chronology keeper, your infomercial says that it's developed specifically for county public health departments. Do they have versions for other types? Is this something other departments might be able to use?
You know, I am not sure.
Various grants require.
Right. Yeah, I am not sure. That's something we could definitely look into and see. It's very customizable, so I don't see why it wouldn't work for other departments, but it's specifically made to meet those state D O H tracks.
Okay.
The reason we feel this is very helpful is because many of our staff is state funding their salary. So when we report, yes, every half hour, 15 minutes, right, and logging to there and it's, for me, goes through it, it's very easy, very quick. Oh, yeah, what you are doing and what you do for how long. Yeah, if without this system, probably, yeah, we cannot report as good as now where to do. It's really a great program.
Anything else? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Both. Motion carries. That finishes our agenda. Oh, wait, that finishes a resolution. Okay, you're up.
Now, yes, let me turn to Vera and Jimmy and talking about this more annual program evaluation.
Everybody received a copy of our annual performance eval that we present to our state committee in March, and I just wanted to, if anybody had any questions, concerns, I want to be here so I can answer it for you. But we did, everyone received the copy. If anybody just want to answer any questions? Yes.
I just want to make a suggestion.
Please.
Did we put the acronyms at the beginning of the report?
You're the only ones that received these acronyms.
Okay. So, yeah, but when you hand it to a clerk, could you ask the clerk to put it at the front?
You got it.
So I know what in God's name I'm looking at with HC, HC.
I tried to add them all.
I'm trying to look at the bottom of the page, see if it's there, and then we got all the way to the end and I turned it over and saw, why didn't I look at that first? But the report is very well done.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? How's your count? We answered.
Count for hospice?
Yes.
I believe we're at 18 active.
So we've been struggling here.
Yes. Last year awful, for that increase.
Anything else?
You've always got my support. I'll always be a supporter, even when I'm not here.
If you're happy here, you can come to be volunteered.
And this one needs to be approved.
Okay. So I need to have a motion for the acceptance of the report, right? Thank you. Second?
Second.
Second. I think we kind of did the discussion. Any other comments?
I just think, what was it, five years ago, four years ago, Heather? Four years ago, the possibility of eliminating the program and, because Heather and I weren't in favor of that, I think it's wonderful. I thank you for your dedication.
This is Vera, yes, Vera put her last time and she, before she now become the director of patient services, she was head of, yes, hospice and things around that, find a way to save costs.
You know, the whole umbrella of the program has done well because obviously we've gone about trumpeting the fact that we might have marked up a couple more notches of our overall health standards.
Yeah.
Hopefully, we don't falter on that.
Yep, keep moving up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I wasn't prepared to accept the motion. Both, motion carries. Okay, Doc, what's next?
Next, next is an announcement, and I'm going to distribute it here, and we will have a webinar, you know, department holder webinar, Colorado Department of Public Health will present their recreational marijuana experience, and it's in our building, and I just share with you and let you know. Because this NICEHOP organized it, sponsored, and we have our own seat, and I distributed this in our community as well, so, yeah. And this, after sending out this agenda and another new event, and this is about tick and tick-borne disease, and a professor from University of Massachusetts will come to town and talk about tick-borne disease. And we settled the time and we haven't settled the place yet, and this probably tick-borne disease harder to predict, look likely as well increase, and we already distributed in community, save the date. Thank you. So these are two announcements, and I really encourage the community to come, especially this tick-borne disease.
Yes. That's it?
Now, go to next. Director's report, and let me first pass the ball to Tina. And Tina, Tina is our nurse, I call, always since I came here, I call her nurse epidemiologist in our department, and she did a great job, and, yeah, last year you gave her a promotion to senior.
Thank you.
So I brought her back and let her know what she's doing.
He made me come and he made me be good, and I can't swear or say anything. So I'm Tina, I worked, I'll be 30 years at the health department in two weeks. I do immunizations, I do all the flu shots, probably giving you all your flu shots and your children's shots, and I follow up on all communicable diseases, which is whether it's Lyme or Salmonella, Giardia, or STDs, which are flying high, and hepatitis C, which Dr. Newpuck is really keeping me in business over at FARM a lot. He is testing a lot, and we are seeing a lot with the drug increase in our county. We've got much, much, much hepatitis C out there. I do all the, I do all the investigations by law. I have to call them and do a complete investigation with them, make sure that they're aware of their diagnosis, which most of the doctors are great. I, you know, I always work with the docs first to let them know, you know, they tell the patient. I offer all hepatitis C patients and their sexual partners, as many, how many there are, free hepatitis A and B vaccine, because they're already compromised with the hepatitis C, we try to give them a little bit more extra protection. We offer that at our clinic every Tuesday that we do. I'm seeing a big increase in STDs, not just from our college, but in our 50, 60, and 70-year-olds. They are really escalating, yeah, they are. Yeah. What was it?
We all had that response.
Yeah, it's big, and it's not my teens as much anymore as my older group of people. And, you know, that's, that's the fun part of my job, really, that really, truly is. Tell me all about it. But, yeah, that's what I do, and it keeps me busy all day, every day. Any given day, I can pull 20 new hepatitis C cases from VA players. That's the reporting system that we get from the labs. And then my job is to follow through. I call the doctor first, and then we talk, and then he gives me the go-ahead to do my investigation. Sometimes it goes great, sometimes they hang up on me and refuse to talk to me, but, or if you have Salmonella or Giardia, any of your GI illnesses, and I'm seeing an increase in Lyme, Lyme disease with a tick, that's huge, that's huge. But the state has done this thing now where they dictate who I investigate and who I don't investigate. So, and I'm seeing a lot of little kids, seven, eight, nine-year-olds, especially with knee and joint pains, especially in the knees. They're thinking they got hurt at soccer practice or whatever, but mom doesn't know they got bit by a tick, because everyone thinks it's a spider bite. Everyone thinks it's a bug bite, when that in fact was the tick bite, you know, and after two weeks or a month of antibiotics, they're better. But the docs are really great about testing for Lyme, especially these little guys now, because they're the ones outside. And it's not just wooded areas anymore, it's right here in the city, it's, they're everywhere. So, and I know we did a thing about ticks and about, you know, they're going to have a, save the date or something with that, you know, check, check your children when they come in, check yourselves when you come in, if you're out in the yard, take a shower. I went to the morning for that. Yeah, so that's what I do. Any questions?
It's amazing, Jen, I got to say that, you know, the ticks are all over in mulch and stuff near homes and all over the place. It's terrible.
I actually have two questions, just so I understand the process. If someone is diagnosed with hepatitis C in Syracuse, let's say, if you put their homes in a swiggo, the doctors have to contact you?
Yeah, I automatically get it. The electronic reporting system goes automatically to, the labs come to the local health department and they're sitting that they're in.
Okay.
Yeah, and I'll call the doc and I'll say, hey, you have a client that's, that's my resident, and they're really great to talk to.
And not to get too technical, what's the biology behind vaccinating for the A and B as a way of giving them a boost with the C?
Because it's your liver. Right now, the liver is compromised.
Okay.
And hepatitis A is what you get from bad food and water. Hepatitis B is a lot like hepatitis C, but it's blood and body fluids, and that mimics, hep C mimics hep B a lot.
Okay.
But hep C is not sexually spread. I mean, can it be? Absolutely, but low, low, not as much as B. So there's a vaccine for A, and there's a vaccine for B, but there's no vaccine for C. So what we do, and especially if they're trying, if they're trying to be in remission or if they're trying to get rehab, that's just another protection, because they're, they're being good, you know, their, their bodies not being compromised anymore, their risk factors are low. And there's a great new hepatitis C regime out there, medication that's great, but you have to prove to be six months clean, or they won't even consider it, because it is so costly, like $22,000.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, and it used to be really bad, the regime before was on golly, it was one year, and it was rifampin and, I can't, rifirone, and that was, gave you suicidal thoughts, but it cleared that infection with this new drug out there. Some insurance card companies are covered, Medicaid pays for it. So, and a lot of our clients are Medicaid, are people that are going to the FARM or, you know, Syracuse Behavioral Health, and we're seeing a lot of this, the doctors out in Alaska in here for Suboxone, you know, program, and Suboxone is just helping wean from the heroin and, yeah, and it's, it's huge. The drug use here is huge. And you know, what people don't understand, and when we talk, when I talk to my hep C people, their biggest thing is, I use a clean needle, but it's not the needle, it's the water, it's the cotton ball, it's the spoon. We're all sharing the same spoon, but everyone thinks because they have a clean needle that they're good, and that's not, that's not where we're getting it. We're getting it from the water, the cotton ball, and the works, it's called the works, which is just all your equipment, that they're not thinking, you know, they're thinking, you know, yeah.
I want to go back to Lyme disease. Four or five years ago, my wife was discovered to have Lyme disease, and she seldom got out of the house, I mean, and we didn't have pets, and that didn't bring it in, I mean, she don't get off the sidewalk or the driveway, so where it comes from, we don't have a clue. Well, you can get it without being out in the weeds.
Sure.
A Lyme disease terrifies me. I mean, I live in the middle of the woods and I'm out there all the time, and I, I have a regimen, like a howling, so we kids, we're always out there and stuff, so it's terrifying, but it is crazy how fast now, you can just walk over, pick up a piece of wood, and you have Lyme, it's everywhere. I think it couldn't be worse timing, like when we're trying to get our kids out from the TV and outside, that.
You're so right.
It's a terrifying thing, the parents are saying, you know, possibly, hey, don't do that or don't go out, so, you know, I, because it is something, because I have had, my son had it, I mean, my infant, like, we went for a walk and I pulled one off her neck that night, it was crazy, in the winter. And, but, if you know, you know, 48 hours, you serve days, it's, I guess I don't know if there's information, we should be getting to the elementary schools so that people know how to check their kids, like, and so that they at least can say, oh, jeez, okay, if you do have one, here's how we check, I don't know, but I just think it's, it's amazing how much this is exploding and it's everywhere right now.
Annually, annually, we send this reminder, parents check ticks. Usually, we send out in May every year before their school ends, and then remind the parents summertime, and they keep checking, but now it's really, it's more look like it's year round the situation.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not just.
All winter long, usually I would have a decrease in the winter, but I've been getting them right along, and, like I said, there's so much of it now that the state will say, okay, you investigate this, this, and this, and we're not going to have you investigate that one. But they're being taken care of, their doctors still getting the same reports we are. And it is, you're right, that's probably one thing that I get so nervous about is Lyme, and because you don't know, you think you just, you know, people think you're exhausted, you're, I mean, from heart to Bell's palsy, to arthritis, to cardiac issues, if it's not, if it's not taken care of, it is debilitating, truly it is.
Yeah, actually, I don't understand, sorry to delay with a little bit, but when they, when they actually, I mean, it's not like you can draw blood and say, yeah, you can have Lyme, you're actually testing for the antibodies that are fighting against Lyme?
No, what, no, you're testing for, you are testing for the virus from the tick bite. That's what you are testing. There's two tests, it's an IgG test and an IgM test.
Yeah.
And that's how we, you could be negative for one, positive for the other, but you also have to do history, you have to know what, what your symptoms are and stuff, and, you know, some, some docs will do like a 10-day, just do a 10-day, but the regime is doxycycline twice a day for, for 28 days. And, and I say to them, you need to take that, that's so important to finish that medication, because it's going to relieve some of those symptoms, it really is, but people go years without being, they, they think it was just a spider bite, or they don't, they don't go get, they don't go get checked, and then all of a sudden, they're just, they're exhausted, they can't get off the couch, they're just, you know.
The concerning follow-up to me is the how many times I've heard about some misdiagnoses, you know, at the local, you know, rundown, and they're missing that kind of, because it's so much, so then they're prolonging having it before they get the treatment, which immediately makes it that much worse, but, you know, anyway to me, it's very terrifying.
Yeah, but I have to tell you, the doctors now are urging cares, they are right on it. If you come in and you're saying, my, this, they're going to draw blood, it's just a blood draw, you know, and you know what, and be your own advocate too, if you're not feeling well, if you're not, ask them, draw Lyme tighter on me, just draw, just draw, it's just a blood test.
Yeah.
And take it from there.
Yeah, actually, that was my question, because I know we've come a long way with the test, and I know there was a lot of false, you know, negatives and that kind of, I think, before. The one thing I don't understand is, I know that the virus can go, can be like latent in your body and not be, you can be non-symptomatic for years, right?
Well, because people blow up the initial, they just think they have a cold or they have, because a lot of Lyme symptoms are flu-like symptoms, so they just think, yeah, it's okay, I, it'll go away, and you do, it does go away, you do feel better, and then it kind of comes in.
But isn't there like, you can have like the bite, and then the bull's eye, maybe, maybe not.
Sometimes it blows out.
And then it can, and then nothing for years, right? And then all of a sudden, it comes on, so you've now forgotten about the fact that you have had a bite or whatever.
Right.
If you were tested in that interim period, would they still find the virus with these new tests?
Yes, absolutely.
So do you see in this area becoming just a natural thing to do at a well visit, for instance, to have the Limes?
Yeah. And just, and you, you say, listen, I want to be tested for Lyme, I mean, it's already testing you for a complete, you know, your, you know, your regular blood test and Lyme right in that.
As a preventative.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, absolutely.
And to carry this a step further, because we have lost a dog previous to this one, our vet told us every time they come in for a vet check, you should, you should request a blood draw, you know, because you can, we were taught a process called the rub-down from the point of a puppy, every time she comes in, she thinks it's a belly rub, but it's hands all over every part of her to check, but your pets need to be, they need to be checked too, because, you know, they are carrying the tick, they're not going to give you Lyme because they've got it, but that's, that's kind of made me think of that when you said that about the test, and see that when you go to do that checkup, you should say, you know, if you're going to do the, draw the blood for every day, have a check on it.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I would like to ask, is there anything going on with the science situation of killing these things off? I mean, can we use a program that works in that regard?
This, this, yes, in our community outreach, we, we were asked many times, and we always encourage them to find out, to find, to find out agencies that are certified and make sure they use federal EPA-approved repellent, yeah.
Repellent. Can, like, can you go to a store and buy granular insecticide that possibly would eradicate some of this stuff? Definitely.
It's, it's not eradicate, it's just, yes, prevents them to invade into your property, yes. This is, some, some, some agencies do it, and some EPA-approved chemicals, it's there, yeah.
Anything else?
Okay, back to me, and my report. Yes, really, I, I want to add one more thing, already Tina touched, it's really, in our county, we have seen hepatitis C increase in recent years is related to increased drug use, because she said, yes, hepatitis C is drug, is blood community, and so she have needles like this and really increase hepatitis. Hepatitis, yes, treatment regime now is easier and cheaper. I think 10 years ago, like, yes, much more than $22,000 to clean it out. And many patients, they cannot keep it for this long time, but for us in our county and also in other countries, I think, yes, hepatitis is related to drug. Okay, my report, and I, I put it here, and recent disease activity, and let, let me move easy things first, but, yes, thank you a lot, tick-borne disease already covered. You're kidding? Thank you.
Bye, everybody.
So, I can cause off tick-borne disease, and our mosquito surveillance program will start, and we're already work with state, and we're going to open this, our mosquito station in the end of May, and we're getting student, summer assistant ready and get the train and start our mosquito program, okay? And rabies, yeah, this year so far, we have five, five rabid wild animal already, last year, same time, only one or two, so we send out press release timely, and also, yes, because of this rabies, and we got attention, and I have a clip, our staff, they, they work on, yes, interview buyer, report, and also SUNY Oswego student, oh, no, no sound.
The sound is over.
Okay, okay, yeah.
It's something public health assistant Christopher Masuka hasn't seen much of in his 33-year career.
She walked up to a skunk that was in her backyard, and the skunk approached her, and she picked it up, took it home.
Masuka says he then had to arrange to get the skunk, put it down, and send it to a lab to get tested. One day later, it came back positive for rabies.
So then I had to start the 14-year-old on treatment, and again, luckily, nobody else was exposed to it.
This was just one of the more memorable cases he has witnessed on the job. He remembers another situation that could have been avoided.
Unfortunately, the woman, you could hear clearly going, get away, skunk, get away, instead of pulling her dog inside.
To avoid getting bitten by rabid animals, officials say it's best not to get close.
If you've got a skunk that's, that's coming near you or approaching you, more than likely, there's, there's something going on with that skunk, and you don't want to be there. Don't try to approach it, skunks just don't come up to you.
And Masuka's boss says pet owners should make sure their pets have all of their shots.
If you have a pet, it needs to be vaccinated.
In his more than 30 years working with rabid animals, William says cases are not specific to one location.
It's everywhere, it's everywhere in New York State, it could show up anywhere.
And if you or your pet start to feel sick?
Once you start, if you start showing symptoms, there's nothing you can do, pretty much.
So this, this is a short clip, and we, we, we're, we're, we're going to use this for our outreach and put it, now, they, they end up putting their, in our. put it there into our computer and educated the community. So, uh, this is rabies. And the flu, yes, flu season and we have seen Oswego County flu reporting case reduced about this year. Most of area or statewide, still it's wide, uh, widespread. And this year's flu season is longer than usual and they say almost like a two peak season because in the season, two strain of flu virus is there, so, but yes, the the number is going down. Measles, measles, uh, this measles and I think in the news, uh, keep, keep, uh, reported and in the nation, twenty, twenty, twenty some state reported, uh, measles cases. And this two states, uh, on the top, one is California, the other is New York State. In New York State, uh, two place, one is New York City, uh, Brooklyn and Queens. And another is, yes, not far away from New York City, uh, Rockland County. And, uh, but this, yes, so far no case in, uh, upstate yet, but we're already aware of it and and, uh, press release is under drafting and send out and our staff, uh, Vera is working on look at our health department's staff, their immunization status because state require everybody working health department to get a vaccination application. So this is what I'm working on.
Are you getting, uh, any more walk-ins for this?
We're getting a lot of phone calls. And asking if they need a booster, but that's not the recommendation yet. It is for our staff, the front lines, yeah. That includes environmental, um, finance because of the level.
Not, not for everybody.
Yes.
Higher in the company, uh, in, in the, in the health department.
In the health.
Yeah, everybody.
I would like to think that's because we have a very successful vaccination program.
We do, we never, um, made the support staff show proof of immunization. So there's a lot of, um, employees, about forty altogether. They got another saying that we would like proof that they were vaccinated. It is for their own safety. Um, we're silly to think that it's not gonna come this way. And then we're gonna increase to seven hundred in New York City, so we need to make sure that everyone's protected.
So how do you show that if somebody can't, I mean?
A tighter, a negative tighter, a blood draw. So we're gonna see what we have at the end, a lot of people are working on getting, um, the correct documentation, either two MMRs. Um, anyone born, um, before nineteen fifty seven, they don't need one that's, um, assumed immunity to the disease.
Everybody had it years ago, I mean, if you got measles, or if they were, you got measles, you were done with it.
So I really believe that, um, from my audit, it's really people that didn't, weren't, they didn't need it to work there. So they're getting it together and we'll see what our numbers.
Their blood drawn test.
Yes, if a negative tighter, if they haven't received one or two vaccine, a negative tighter would be beautiful. If they received one, then a booster shot, a lot of people that were born in the fifties one received one because they thought that was all right, but they do need a booster to show a positive tighter, yes, yeah, so.
But back then, the clinic, the visiting nurses never went to houses back then. Visiting nurses are the ones that run the clinics.
Right.
And so you went to the clinic and spin wine on a Saturday, cause you didn't have school.
Right.
You didn't go to school and they got everything taken care of then.
And anyone that attended college, right, has had it, you just have to show proof. And if not, no proof, we just give a negative tighter and look after it.
Right, thank you.
Okay, uh, thank you, yeah, so that's all, uh, disease surveillance. And then let's talk about this, uh, health ranking, go back and analyze, um, health behavior here. Just the health behavior list and in, in the ranking, yes. Uh, county health rankings, they locate the smoking, uh, obesity, food environment. Yes, easy access, healthy food and the physical activities, commit, uh, exercise opportunity, it's more facilities and excessive drinking, alcohol impaired driving deaths, uh, STD and the teen birth, they locate this, um, nine, yes, nine indicators. So, uh, I, I look at the detail and really here, smoking no change and excessive drinking no change is because they use the same, uh, they, they use the same data. Uh, two thousand nineteen, two thousand eighteen, use same data, so no change. And the rest, seven and I, I put it here and we, we can see really, like here, uh, obesity, yeah, uh, our ranking go up five scale in sixty two counties. And, uh, our rates go up three percent as well. This means, yes, in the race, this like, I don't know why. And, uh, population, yes, become heavier and heavier. And worrisome is really kids and they predict, yes, every year will go, keeping going up. And some, sometimes when I talk with school, uh, nurse and the teachers, I say, yes, child of the obesity is a national security issue, because in the future, who's going to the army? Everybody overweight, so, so this, this really, I'm not surprised to see, uh, the, the trend is going up, but yes, at least our country is doing better than the rest of county and we're, we're moving forward, moving. And for the environment index, yes, they complicated, I put a lot of things there. Our ranking is the same and our, this scale is from zero to ten, so we improve point one. And the physical, it's physical inactivity and this from, uh, health, uh, individual, uh, phone call and the health behavior, uh, survey, national health behavior survey. And this, yes, you can see people in our community more active and our ranking, it's a big jump, ten percent. Or ten, uh, uh, jump ten, uh, scales. And access to exercise opportunities. And this is really our, our county, uh, as a Lulu county, it's, it's nature and it's hard, but still, I think it's, we can be quite proud and we improved seven percent. Because I remember, uh, if based on Oswego county population and the size, our gym, if the same situation bring to New York City, Manhattan only need three gyms cover these people. So although we don't have any, uh, oh, yeah, although we down five and this means really, other county, they're, they're building more or open more exercise facility. And this, that's why when I saw, uh, this, um, anti-poverty grant and talking about building sidewalk, yes, I feel good and if we, in our county, we don't want to need the gym and the people so far with, but if we can promote the sidewalk and encourage, provide, uh, this kind of opportunity, encourage the people walking. So this and, uh, yeah, uh, alcohol imp- or excessive drinking, yes, it's all, uh, the same data source, no change. And alcohol impaired driving deaths and we we, uh, scale go up three and the rate go down two, it's good. And STD comparatively, yes, we reduce a lot. And the statewide STD is increasing. Statewide STD is increasing and we, we are going down, it's good. And yes, we, we, we gain the most upper fourteen scale and timbers, not much change. So this, this really, anyway, a- a- as, as a group, as a whole community and I think our health behavior is move towards the right direction. Okay, and, uh, uh, internal and the external colla- collaboration and really, yes, I, 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 I like the collaboration and really, we, we need the collaboration. Get, get the things done and it's, it's so good and this, this is a very tight end of community and we, we can always get the things done together and I just reported some, uh, reported some, uh, examples to you and, uh, last, you know, mid, 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 middle of, eh, middle of April, not last week. And state had a, a statewide opiate conference and the state had opiate conference and give, give each county four slots and we, uh, we have our department educator and, uh, Greg, Attorney General and, uh, Teresa Wilson, our foundation and Fannerham, four people attended and this opportunity came to our department and I sent out a message to, uh, a group, these people and yes, they respond. And it's a little bit shame and because when I saw four slots and I sent it to five, five agency and who's the last one I dropped it, because I don't want to waste everybody so today and if not, yes, would, uh, the company will lost an opportunity and, uh, DSS, they sent the last to me, so. I, I asked, I said, you keep it and in the weakness to the end, yes, no, no, uh, elevator open. So DSS didn't have chance to go, but it's really, community responds very well and we work with community together. And the mo- 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 mobile, um, food pantry is still going well and, uh, especially I, I didn't go last Saturday, I forgot it, but the previous time, uh, two weeks ago in, uh, in the church, Bowen's Corner and really, now, it's not just that we are there and the community members volunteer, organize the traffic and the two people really help a lot. And surrounding the church, church there at the, uh, Bowen's Corner, uh, in Grand. And the people, yes, one, one, one side they're in, one side out and it's very, very smooth. And really, you, you can see, uh, that community is still there. So this, this is very good.
Get a chance to attend one of those, it's, it's very interesting to, to be involved in that, I've done a couple of them.
Uh, National Trails Day, June first and we, in the county, we will have a bigger event and now more and more agency participate in our planning and the school, OCO lead the efforts. And now schools arise and, uh, YMCA, they, they all coming together and I, uh, also I got support from, uh, uh, Tur- Tourism Community Development Office and I went to their, uh, tourism board presented and also, uh, we draft a press release and, uh, Jim is revising it, so this, and I, I already got the chairman's support here and really we want to, uh, get the legislative chairman endorse it and enter the full meeting. This afternoon, yes, the, uh, the planning committee will meet together and I don't have more information to you, but I will send an email to you, let you know and how open it is. All right, June first and really, I, I hope you can help and this is the first time in the county and the first time, let's start with small step and every year, increase, increase and really this, this will reach the county health behavior, okay? Uh, rabies clinic, uh, so far this year, we had two rabies clinic and I reported it to you last month, I think, yes. Uh, was so, so, and the second one was great. And since I think, since two thousand seventeen, our, our, uh, attendance is relative compared to previous year. It's relatively low, but this year, our last, this month, last one, yeah. Last Wednesday, if I remember correctly, last Wednesday, it's big. And also very good is really, uh, we, we, this, we got the highest donation in the past two years. And this, this, I think, yes, work with, uh, community, uh, with Jim and the timely send out press release and help increase people's awareness, it's, it's great. And the last, uh, collaboration is really, I, I, I want to send you, we Vera and the Diane lead the strategic planning and, uh, we got your support and in the past several months and we have only one legislative response, our, uh, survey and in the end, we have three of you and the response and totally, we got the survey, se- uh, fifty seven response and we are in our final stage and we will, uh, next month or following months, we will have a full our products to you and share with you, get your feedback, okay? And these are all in my list, but don't go away, two more things I want to share with you. I know, sorry. Two, two things, it's new and really, it, it, it'll be very, very challenging and I, 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 I want to, uh, your understanding and the support, uh, two things, let me go, easy things first. And now state require our environmental health issue, uh, issue this food, food service certificate with Works Comp certification from state lab, uh, labor department. And this is not a bigger issue for already established facility. Because yes, like restaurant like OCO, they already have in the state system and quickly, they can get it. The challenge is summertime, a lot of communities, they have fundraised uh, activity and the need to get our temp permit to, to do barbecue, like these kind of things will be very, very challenging and we already, yes, this spread our message and probably, yes, when I talk, I will go back and send out a press release and let people plan ahead of, because without this, uh, Work Comp certificate and the state not allow us to issue a permit. So if we issue it without this Work Comp certification, it's we against the law. So we want to follow state law and really, we need the community be aware of this new requirement and we need it. But state system, I know last year sometimes and it's so cumbersome to get it and some, yeah, it's very, very frustrating, I just want to let you know, this is one thing. Another thing is more complicated and the state, uh, reduce their lab, uh, baseline from fifteen to five. And, uh, Oswego county is, is a Lulu county and we have a lot of older building and spread it and like in many place in, in the state, they already ahead of time and like, uh, our most close Syracuse, they have a lot of older building, but ten, fifteen years ago, they started community-wide lab reduction work and they got a state grant and so many community is ahead of our county. And reduce this fifteen to five, increase our workload. Let me put the data there, last year, throughout the county. Let me put the data there, last year, throughout the county, we have, we, our environmental staff only visited one home because only one home tested, or no, not one home, one child from one home, yes, tested more than fifteen, okay? And now state want to reduce this to five and we look at it. If reduced to five from two thousand seventeen data and we need to visit at least one, yeah, one hundred eight home in the county. And so we look at it and to meet the state requirement, we need to get forty thousand dollars for equipment, this is one time. And every year, updated material, uh, calibrated machine and every year cost is twenty thousand dollars. Forty thousand dollars one year and twenty thousand dollars every year, material and, uh, calibrated machine. And we need for full time additional, additional, no. Yes, for additional staff and two sanitary, one sanitary technician and half IN, one clerk and half clerk and half educator, publicist educator. And I look at, yes, the salary these people add together is close to one hundred eighty thousand dollars plus six percent, sixty-four percent fringes. So we need three hundred thousand for hire these people. This really, we cannot do and state, yes, when they pass the law in the state budget, they increased, uh, if I remember correctly, nine million dollars. And but according to Naisichou, yes, this is less than a third the whole state need. So this, 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 this will be our health departments take a challenge. It's not a challenger for us as a Lulu county, the same situation. Uh, if I remember correctly, yes, like, uh, Niagara County and they say, yes, their visiting will increase two hundred times and we increase a hundred times. So, uh, these are our challenges and I, I share with you. This all I needed to the board. If you have any questions?
And comment?
I just see, what do you, what is happening at the state level with regard to the smoking policy going to twenty-one? Have you heard anything else?
Smoke, smoking already passed. Smoking, uh, up to, uh, twenty-one years, yes, a pastor in both, both chambers.
Will that information come back to you and then you have to go up to all the retailers and will they already know that?
We.
Is that already in effect?
No, not, not the effect, effect yet and we're, 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 we're going to send out the information. Yes, yeah, this, this our, uh, our, uh, environment helps already, yes, we'll start to work on it.
That's just a purchase though, right?
Just a purchase, yeah.
Well, at least, it was, when there was a lot of movement about this county or that county that you can drive across the street to their county to get it.
Yeah.
Well, it was a lot of that conversation, why don't we do it and they haven't done it. And I think that, I mean, at least a big step is statewide, start that way. I saw that, I think it was Kenny and Ray themselves started that policy already in the, in their stores, so. Let's hope that, that's another helper across the board, but.
Okay.
One more question. Uh, we brought up the discussion, uh, last time about the Board of Health and taking the conversation, uh, you were going to a Board of Health meeting and you were gonna kind of have a conversation. Jim, we're hoping you brought that up and can you give us an update from?
I didn't make it to the last meeting, I was tied up medically, so.
I just, you know, I, again, I would say, I think possibly at some time during the year, someone or a representation from the Board of Health should come to this meeting and have a conversation with us here.
We're gonna talk about that.
And, and talk about goals like that they have as well, uh, that might be in parallel with the legislative goals here, uh, towards, you know, the health rankings and other things. I just think it'd be good to get a report from them and I know you come and report on behalf, but we all appoint those people, uh, as you did last before, to the board.
Yeah.
And it would be nice to sometime, maybe annually, get a report from them to come back us and, does that make sense?
Yeah.
Rich. It could be as simple as scheduling the Board of Health meeting than having this committee right before this committee meeting, so, or right after this meeting, so each board can see the other in operation. Their meetings are public, so there's no reason why they can't have Board of Health right after this or right before this.
They meet at the health department.
But they could meet here, they won't.
Right. Just a thought, I just think.
We, we could present that idea, because they meet on the first Friday in the month.
We could bring that up at the next meeting.
Yeah.
And talk with them, I just think it's important that they're all have the same goals.
We agree with that, we, you and I talked about that, we agree with that. Yeah, we'll have that conversation. Anything else? I don't, did you say?
Yes, you did.
Um, motion?
Jim, you've got the, um, the advisory committee?
Oh, minutes?
Yeah, the minutes, we, we usually have to approve those.
Okay. They were in the back.
Yeah, in the back, yeah.
Yeah. So we did not approve each one?
We, we approved them.
Okay, so.
I'll move it.
Whose fault was that? The one made the raise to it, she left? That one you?
That's one advisory.
Okay.
I'll move it.
Thank you, Frank. Grab the second, Melford. Any discussion?
No, I vote not.
We're voting on approving their minutes.
Oh, okay.
The acceptance.
Okay.
Okay, any other discussion? Favor say aye.
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 Both.
And in your packets is the quarterly expense report. If there's any questions, please go ahead and call me again.
Is this gonna be up and, uh, can we get this through our tablets that, uh, hand handed tablets?
Well, if they were part of the packets, they were put on tablets.
Yeah, but. Looking, looking at the whole follow-up and all the guilt.
Or you want a full, all departments?
Yeah, that's what I was wondering.
We can run that and I can transfer it to Chris.
I mean, otherwise I'm going through the packets and pulling off the back end of it. At least I can do what I'd like to do.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, so now I'll take the motion.
I'll move it.
Move second. Favor.
Aye.
Stand here, thank you.